I'm making this announcement in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, being Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975 Laws of the State of New Jersey. The Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule of the meetings on the Planning Board of the Borough of Kenilworth for the year 2018 and has posted a true copy of this schedule on the bulletin board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall and has mailed true copies of this schedule to the local source in the Star Ledger and is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, the notice requirements of this Open Public Meeting Act have been satisfied in regards to this meeting. Can we all rise to the question?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion for the approval of June 14, 2018 minutes. Motion, second. Motion made by Mr. Shelby, seconded by Mr. Brimaldi. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any communications? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolution of application. I'm sorry. We'll move on to new business. Application number 371, minor site plan, East Coast Emergency Lighting, Lot 2, Lot 9.
John Corro.
We all can notice, cap? Notice of publication, we're done. Thank you.
John, can you spell your last name?
Sure. E-Z-Z-U-R-R.
I'm sorry. E-R-R?
B-A-Z-Z-U-R-R.
Mr. Ray, there's no notice required. This is a minor site plan.
Okay, Mr. Brizero?
This is my site plan application, Route 636 in Washington Avenue, Lot 2, Lot 9 in Borough. This is a standard building on a 23-foot acre block and the presence of the property is light industrial, commercial. My clients intend on starting, well not starting, but operating their emergency lighting business from a location of emergency lighting business entails police departments and fire departments bringing smaller vehicles, motor vehicles and SUVs to the locations for purposes of updating them with emergency equipment, lighting, sirens, things of that nature. And basically, you know, I can have them testify as to what their operations are. I know I submitted a letter to the board, I can go through it myself, or if you've got to have them testify, it's up to you.
You're peron. The way you want to handle this application is up to you and we're happy to hear you and the owners of the company.
Well, they're, the operations manager and the owner are here, so if you have any questions, then feel free to put them under open access questions.
So maybe you could just proceed.
Absolutely. So the business is East Coast Emergency Lighting. It's been in business for over 20 years. They have another location within the state of New Jersey down in Millstone Township. They also have a business located in Tappan, New York. They also have a business located down in Virginia. So they've been doing this for a long time, they know what they're doing, so they're pretty confident as to what's going to be on at that location. I've had conversations with them, so it's going to go on at that location. At the beginning, they will have three employees there. The three employees are basically installers. So what will happen is police departments, fire departments will drop off cars, sometimes four or five at a time. The cars will be placed in the back lot of the location, waiting to be upfit. The interior of the building can probably hold, how many cars?
Twelve.
Twelve cars. So, you know, four or five cars in the back lot into the building, they're upfit with emergency lighting, and then the police departments come back and pick them up when they're ready. Any cars that are waiting to be outfitted will either remain inside the building while the other cars are being outfitted within the building or in the back lot, they will not be in the front portion of the building. At the beginning, they intend on having three employees there because that's, you know, once they build up the location, so right now they're in, I call it South Jersey, I'm from South Jersey, but it's really Millstone, central New Jersey, to you guys, South Jersey. But essentially, they have a pretty established business. They do most of their police departments in Monmouth, Middlesex, and Ocean Counties, and they have a fairly big presence actually in the northern part of the state. They do City of Newark, they do City of Elizabeth, I think they even do Kenilworth. So once they establish themselves here, they'll probably grow to six employees. Based on the configuration of the property, they feel they'll have enough parking in the back of the building for their employees plus any cars that are waiting to be outfitted. So there should be no employee parking in front of the building. The only parking in front of the building would be that of customers who are dropping off cars. So actually, when they drop off cars, obviously they have to bring out a car to drive the people back. And when they come pick up cars, cop cars come and, you know, there'll be five cops in the car, they'll get out and pick up their cars. And, you know, so they don't anticipate having more than two or three customers there at a time. And that's probably a lot, you know, they don't come one at a time to pick up their cars. I went over the letter, Kevin O'Brien, and he's given two letters, the last of which is the line 6, 2018. In that letter, he had indicated that the disclosure of ownership form for the business owner and property owner were missing. However, they were previously submitted to the board. I don't know if it's part of your package, but I do have copies here and I did submit them previously. If you want to walk these and hand them up.
What letter? Do you have them in your file? We should fix that by giving it to the show. Please, as the chair.
I believe they were previously submitted, that's fine.
What date, I'm sorry, Mr. Brizero, what date did you submit that as? Do you know?
I think it came with the original, with the 18 application package.
Okay.
Part of that. So that would have been, June 20?
June 21st? Is that right? Yeah. June 21st?
I'm looking at June 20, but now I'm doing it.
Okay, you got June 20. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's yours?
No, we.
I have the disclosure.
Yeah, we have. We don't need to mark it because we have it.
June 26th.
When I saw it, I was surprised because I know I submitted it. Another comment made by Mr. O'Brien had to do with the sign, originally we didn't submit a sign application and he wanted to acquire this application. So also, I think subsequently in my June 20 letter, I submitted a 28.
Graphics.
Right, two graphics, one of the freestanding sign on the property and the other of the sign on the front of the property, so we both should have that. So that comment is taken care of.
By the way, counsel, that was a suggestion, not a requirement.
I understand, but since we're here, it would try.
On the record, you're thinking. Nobody's thinking that we're requiring people to do things have to be really subject.
He made this suggestion and I agree because we're here anyway and at that point I contacted my client and said, you know, you want the signs? And he said, yes. I said, well, let's do it now. There is other issues that he raises, like the address of the applicant's address. I'm turning to page 5 of his letter under planning comments, and there's separate, two separate paragraphs there. The first one talks about additional planters along the building. I don't know, if you look at the drawings or the sign picture of the front of the building, that picture is taken probably in the middle of June, there are planters in front of the building. So you look at the building, if you're looking at it from left to right, there is a garage bay, then there is a door, and then there's windows. Underneath those windows are paver, stacked paver planters with vegetation. So I don't know anything else, if you want anything else there, but that's what he asks. He asks for vegetation along the side of the building, it's already there.
Or in the parking lot.
Or in the parking lot.
Yeah, I thought that perhaps something along the front, right now you've got a full curb cut along the 96 feet of the front. I was thinking that perhaps you planted along that, the gate, the opening, exit or egress from there rather than have people pull in across the full, almost 100 feet.
I have no problem with that, but my only issue is I don't, now, so if you look at this picture for the facade, there is a vehicle parked there.
Right.
I mean, this is a, number one, so vehicles are going to poke in and out of the bay. So obviously, we're not going to have it along that location. I do not know the clearance. So if somebody's parked head-on into the facade and they have to back out in order to, so if they're backing out in order to go out the exit in front of the garage bay door, I don't know if the planters, and I'm assuming you want a sidewalk area also. So I mean, I'll, we'll do whatever you want, but I would think we would need, you know, the counsel engineer to tell us where the planters should go, and then he would have to, please confirm it under your supervision of clearance to the parking lot right now.
That may obstruct the turning movements.
If those are the second issue, which is delineating park.
Right.
So between these two, perhaps we can work something out. Certainly work with Mr. Cuado.
Okay, that's fine. You know, the other, the comment about the parking stripes, this building has been there for a number of years and the pavement, it's not concrete, it's actually pavors there. So my client, from an aesthetic point, we didn't want to put striping or nice aesthetic pavors. But I understand your concerns, you know, and that's why I offered a testimony of only being one or two of me at the most customers at the front blocks. I just, and once again, at the discretion of your engineers, but I've been to the building and I just think it would be very tight if we put anchors on it. And the lines, I have no, no problem. But I have to figure out the ordinance as to what, how big the spaces had to be, we can figure out how the spaces actually go.
You've actually got about 40 feet of clearance between the front of the building and the pavement. Standard trilines.
Easy, yeah.
So there is room to do something. Mr. Cuado, if you'd like to suggest something or you want to work with.
How about with the lines?
Yeah, and we'll figure out the right ways where the parking lot will actually.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, I'm going to ask you both, if you could just speak up a little bit because I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing everyone and I'm sure that camera and that mic is not picking you up because I don't know what just went on there. Did you say that you wanted stripes on those?
No, sir. The two issues of some grating front and delineating the parking space were concerns that I had. Mr. Brizero has said that they would be willing to do something and work with Mr. Cuado about providing something and between the two of them, they can figure something out so that the board were favorably disposed, perhaps the resolution would just state that the applicant will provide these things in accordance with working with Mr. Cuado.
How would you delineate, what are options to delineating spaces other than, other than striping?
You could use curb stops.
Sinage?
Okay. That was the only thing I could think of, curb stops.
Or signage.
Curb stops or signage. I don't think.
You can finish.
Yeah, and I'm not going to get into an engineering discussion with you, with.
Oh, please do.
I'm going to play a little freehold, and that is one of the things that we have a problem down here, is the curb stops because they're tripping hazards, right? No matter how much color you paint, because people are tripping over them, because nobody knows what it is. So now we're talking about balusters when there's new construction. So, you know, I'll do whatever your engineer wants, different town, different standards, whatever you guys want to do. So what we'll talk to Mr. Cuado after the meeting tonight or before tomorrow, whoever is up to you.
Either one's fine.
Okay.
Well, I'd also like to be a part of that because I, you know, as Mr. David just said too, you know, we don't want to see line striping on that area.
Right.
Sinage would be appropriate if we could do that. The curb stops are a bit of a pain in the neck, you know.
I mean, I'd be okay with signage.
Okay with signage?
Yeah.
I would prefer signage.
Yeah, signage.
I would offer a couple, a couple things because, you know, this was before, before the scaffolding, this was an auto body.
Kenilworth Auto Body.
And there was cars there and I would assume, you know, when this gentleman gets somebody's deliveries, sometimes these things sort of might even get delivered on a weekend when it's not there. You know, a fire company drops off two emergency vehicles on a Saturday when they're slow, you might have to sit them in the front and then they get pulled in the back or something. But if he's fitting, emergency vehicles, if he's fitting fire trucks, pumper trucks, ambulances, limiting the turning radius in the front could be problematic and have an impact on our traffic situation on that street, which is always fun when large vehicles are out there anyhow. I mean, I would ask that maybe the pedestrian entrance get indicated so it's protected and secure, that access to the door is clear and keeps fire safety and all of that, and just that the building is.
Trim the bushes?
Get the building, make sure it's not in any type of failure of the maintenance code. The property's pretty, is in pretty decent shape.
It is, it's in good shape, you know.
As far as delineation, even something that's even less visible, but has safety, the same thing that we use on the streets, the indicator reflector pieces that could just be bolted right to the ground. Visually, you don't see them, but you don't see them as you're driving by, but when your lights hit them and all, you can see them at night, you know, they are in a case or just the little bumps.
They're like channeling the lights.
It doesn't stop a vehicle from pulling in and making a turn. And wheel stops, ADA lawyers love wheel stops.
Please, no wheel stops, no stripes on this property.
Yes. And we've got to keep in mind, this is also Michigan Avenue.
Yeah.
Mr. Brimaldi said it's busy.
But cleaning up the side properties, trim your bushes, plant the side, just bring it back up to, I'm sure he's going to take pride in his business and let it reflect on how he keeps the property.
No, they'll absolutely take care of the vegetation front, it's not going to be an issue.
Even with that, I think if they submitted just something to the professionals stating, yeah, well, this is a little squirrely over here, we'll clean this, that, and the other thing up, as the chairman could then review it with the professionals and.
I mean, I was just there, there is, they're evergreens, you know, that's the vegetation in that front planter box. And they're growing and I think the plan would be to trim them so they don't block the light going into the front offices, but other than that, I mean, they're not going to exceed out over the flower boxes, they're not going to exceed above the windows so they're going to be nice and trimmed.
Has any of the board members been to any of their other locations to see their other properties the way they're kept?
No.
Not that, have you visited, stayed over the locations?
Just so the board is aware, full disclosure, Dawn is my wife.
Speed soft.
Dawn owns the business.
Okay.
My law practice is in the same building as her business in Millstone.
Okay.
So I am not ashamed to have my clients pull up to the front of her building.
To my point.
All of the stuff, the stuff, the cars are in the back of the building and it's the same setup. That's why they, they wanted this space because there is a delineation from front to back.
So you're owner and, and counsel?
I'm not the owner, my wife and daughter own it.
Oh, I got it. And you're counsel, I got it.
He just protects it.
Hey, by the way, it wouldn't be the worst thing to have a property in Kenilworth with a bunch of police cars parked in front of it.
Especially there.
Especially with the traffic coming across from there.
Yes. You know, that's an issue you might have, is people parking in your lot for their establishment across the street at night.
Not with all those cop cars.
Having one or two out there, I don't think anybody on this board would object.
Fill in the whole lot so you can't see.
It would be a problem.
Is there any suggestions from the board as to how you prevent people from parking in our lot, with signage or anything, or is this an enforcement issue?
On my property, we have a tow truck company that we had to hire, but we had to do it by ordinance and there's a sign on the building that says, however it's read, you are not allowed to park here by ordinance, 1, 2, 3, 4.
Okay.
And it's an agreement or a contract that you build with that tow truck company. And if they, you can't just put up a sign and say, no parking or you'll be towed because you can't just let someone start. It has to be by ordinance and it has to be on the bottom of that plaque.
Okay. So the ordinance is within the, within the borough?
Yep. I have it in my building.
All right.
And I'm in town.
Okay. Oh, but I've signed you on, it's not a gas on issue. Going back to the list, the next two things I think we took care of already, which was the signage details for your approval, and the last thing was the disclosure of ownership and property, property owner and business owner.
Can I have a question? Yes, sir. Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Understanding that the nature of the business and what was there before, that's my question to Kevin, is that, is there any, is there any difference in the parking requirement for former versus present use?
No, because we're considering this in, thank you, we're considering this an auto repair service facility, much like it was, same as it was before.
Okay, and not being obvious, I'm not very familiar with what was there before, but was that up to snuff? I mean, so is the parking, so is the parking situation adequate at this point?
It meets the orders.
It meets the orders?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll go talk about that. And then as far as you saying that the employees and the storage of vehicles and the excess vehicles that aren't going to come up to the front, the garage in the front, they're going to be stored in the back. I'm assuming there's enough of room in the back for, I guess that's where, that's where the parking was before.
Is there, I mean, there's enough, there's enough 15 vehicles in the rear. Come on up. Could you raise your right hand? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, show you the truth? Just state your name and spell your last name, please.
M-I-N-U-C-C-I.
M-I-N-U-C-C-I. Michael, what's your, what's your involvement with all this?
I'm John Magic.
Okay.
It's slash our facility's.
Thank you.
So back to what I was saying, there's approximately 15 vehicles in the front and that's directly behind the building.
Correct.
The employees are going to be parking on the side of the facility, but you see that main gate in that picture?
In that, in that alleyway or that 28 foot.
Correct, yes. Like I said at the beginning, it will only be three installers there, so three vehicles at present.
Right. Now, you have the garage doors in the front, only from what I saw, so you have the garage doors in the front, it looks like you have two on the side, is it possible?
Yes.
You have one in the back too, that they can come out?
Two in the back and one in the front.
Oh, yeah, so you can drive right to a building. Okay, all right, that's convenient.
Yeah, the front of the building, as I recall, this, the door that we see, that was their spray booth in there, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, well, I stopped by, like I said, I saw the front, I saw it too from the, from the north, for the property to north, I couldn't really see the back, but, okay. And that was all I really had. You mentioned about UPS deliveries and having seen it, so it doesn't seem like you have that much issues, even if you had clients on site park.
It'd be very minimal, yes. Majority of the deliveries would be done by our facility, but the shop, the stock manager, excuse me, that would be delivery one of its personnel. That's in a low small transit van, so he would be in the bay unloading right back.
They wouldn't have, well, you said your clients are going to pretty much, well, first of all, it's all emergency vehicles, right? There's no like, you know, Bob wants lights on his car, like, there's nothing like that.
Possibly, possibly.
Because they're going to drive up and drop it off, you're not going to have deliveries coming on a flatbed for the most part, right?
Absolutely not.
Okay. I'm going to start my own Ghostbusters. Okay. We had another question that just came up about lighting to the side of the building. What's going on with it?
Do you know anything about this one?
I do not. I know it's very well lit on the front.
How about the signage? How is that, and how long does it stay on?
It's backlit and it'll be on a timer, obviously, until it comes up.
And there's no moving, there's no flashing, rolling?
Well, there's a timer temperature.
There's a timer temperature on the east end.
Right, okay. But, but there's no sparkles or stars or anything like that to draw attention to the sign?
Okay, flashing.
And what is the issue on the side of the building? Is it not lit at night?
Well, that's what we're asking you. I don't know what, if there was any movement to put any type of wall sconce or a light on the side of the building.
So there's any cameras and lock system and that'll entail flood lighting?
But there is basic lot lighting.
Is there?
There's lot lighting.
It's not a, it's not a dark situation. And this is just by driving by, not that, and there's the dirt driveway next to it, there's that older setback, what, House I Residential, whatever that space is now. But it's, looks like it's safe enough.
It's not dark.
You don't, you don't take it as a dark situation.
Right, and the good part about it is that that house is set way back and you have a full view there if anything's going on. I mean, the great part about it is the emergency vehicles, that things are going to be there all the time and people will start to say, well, you know, when you see an emergency vehicle of some sort, you right away think, maybe the police have something to do with this. So it's like policed itself.
Absolutely. And our clients have come in and said, what's going on?
Yep. That's where all the drug happening. Stop for bed, I didn't mean that.
Other than that, urgency lighting, do you do any other work? Will you be doing any other work on the vehicles, oil changes?
These cars are not.
Nothing, okay.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Nothing else?
Kevin, do you have anything to add to this application?
No, chairman, this is a minor site plan for the board's consideration. They, you can take whatever action you deem fit, which will be put in a resolution prepared by our attorney.
Chris, anything from you?
Just the.
I can never see you.
You can be talking, get that guy over the fence.
Just the issue with the, with the parking in our front and the possible placement of the planters along the, along the front of the street.
Well, that's a, that's a minor thing that we could work out. I mean, there's nothing here.
Other than that, there's, there's nothing else.
Any others to look at, I don't think?
No.
At this point?
I think one of the board members mentioned clear access to the front door, which will be part and parcel of what you'll do in terms of the planters and signage.
I thought he was going to put a palm tree right in front of it. I'll put that in. So.
No, I'm just thinking.
Okay. All right.
But I do have a comment to make.
Please do.
Because it's probably a little counter to what I think some of my colleagues are in, just that regardless of whether they're emergency vehicles or not, I'm not a big fan of overnight parking in front of a business establishment. So previous business was an auto body shop and they used to leave beat-up vehicles and I know that's probably not the case here, but personally, I don't like to see parking in the front of any business establishment when it's not open. So that's just my opinion.
Whatever. I'd say they ask if that's their practice because they've got a gate inside.
But that's very minimal, they have to be gated. I mean, the clients will have contracts, they have to be gated a lot.
Okay, so that's good.
So you'll have, you'll have, overnight parking and storage is going to be in the rear.
Right.
In the front, will you have any overnight parking in the front?
Very rarely.
Because they usually drop off before the business closes and they have to be locked up in the back.
I don't want to make that as part of the condition that he has that in the front. I mean, why curtail that? But Mr. David had a perfect comment there, and he's right, but, I mean, the gentleman already expressed, 95% of the time, everything's going to be behind a gate if he has a car out there. What are you going to do, run him a citation? That doesn't make sense, I think.
Yeah, no, as long as like it's not the, the practice.
It's not the done for emergency service, that's to be done the next morning, right back in service, please available, go, store a fire, that's all, and it's, you know, once in the building, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, some discussion here? public comments, questions? Right now, from everybody here. Okay, okay. If you like what we're going to do now, is can we have a motion to open this portion of the meeting?
I'll make the motion to open the hearing to the public.
One second. A second. Okay, made by Mr. David, second by Mr. Capari. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak? See none?
I make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Second. Second. Second by Mr. David, second by Mr. Grimaldi. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay. After we just heard all of this, I don't think there was really any conditions, except the discussion about the planter and signage, am I correct?
And the stalls, maybe.
And the parking.
And the parking.
To be worked out, we should go ahead.
Yeah. Is the board in favor of the way that that's being handled with Chris and John? That was easier than.
The way I understand it is, they're going to do whatever we decide, but if we decide there's just something minimal, putting up a sign or whatever, I mean, that is going to be acceptable.
Right.
I would tend to suggest to our engineer that not much get done across the front of that, because I think it works right now. The gentleman has already testified that his plans are not to have anything in the front. That's on testimony, so. Yeah, if we can tighten up what's there, make it look better.
I just did. Maintain and clean it because it's not that bad.
Yep. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Grimaldi. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shoki?
Yes.
Mr. Serna?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Capari?
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Colallo?
Yes.
And Mr. Masio? Yes. Congratulations. Thank you. Welcome, good job. Good luck, Meyer. You're welcome. You'll have a resolution next month. Okay. Yes. Okay, so we're new business. Are we ready to go? We need a time to shovel.
I'll go location.
Okay. Next thing is the County of Union, New Jersey, Galloping Hill Golf Course, Block 184 of I-3. Anyone here to talk about that?
Hi, how are you doing?
Okay, come on up, state your name, address for the record, shaking hands, giving out flowers.
My name is William Giordano. I'm from, actually, my address is 31 Ridge Road in High Brooks, New Jersey, but I work for the County of Union Division of Motor Vehicles.
Your professional?
My professional address is 79 West Grant Street in Elizabeth, New Jersey.
Let me guess where you're in, Mr. David. If you raise your right hand with regard to this matter, do you swear the testimony and comments you're about to give, show me the truth?
Sorry.
And just, just so I can put it on the record, this is what we call Section 31 review. The county has plans, which I'm sure Mr. Giordano will describe, and it's our job to listen and to understand and make recommendations if the board so chooses, which the applicant can either agree or not agree with. That's where we are. So, your, your relationship to this application is?
I am named on the application for the County of Union. The Division of Motor Vehicles is ultimately in charge of all fuel sites within the county, which we have 10, and, you know, we do the maintenance, the updates, the upgrades, anything to do with it, actually, so. In this case, it's, it's a process of starting to update our fuel sites. They were put in in the late 80s and early 90s, most of the tanks. And the thought with the Galloping Hill project was to put bigger tanks in there because when the county undertook building the new courthouse down in Elizabeth, they took out one of our large capacity fuel sites. There's not a whole lot of property or good places, so we chose to put the 8,000 gallon above ground tanks at this site to be a backup. I mean, basically, in Sandy, every municipality in the county got, got fuel from the county because we were the only ones to provide. Now, ultimately, our hope is to maybe eventually have some sort of backup emergency generator on the site and to prevent a problem, then we'll be able to provide fuel. Galloping Hill is probably about the best properties we've got. In the parks, we've got 1,000 and 2,000 gallon tanks, so, you know, this, that's what the project is. As I said, we're going to put ASTs where we can and where they're permitted, so that, that's about the outline of what we're building. Any questions? I mean, I'm glad to answer them as best as I can.
Here they come. Nick?
Here, I'll hit one first before you get to it.
So ahead, make yourself out.
The tank itself?
Yes.
If it's above grade tank, it has to meet certain criteria for safety spillage and self-containment.
Yes.
This does, correct?
They are, they are the nicest plus aesthetically too, because again, you'll be able to see them from the golf course. They're convault tanks, they're, they're double walled with every sort of protection system on them, and then they've got stone enclosures on the outside, you've seen. They look aesthetically nice too, because as I said, you can see them clearly from the greens, the golf course.
I mean, I ask that because on the plan, within a few feet from it, are existing cash basins. So if we had 16,000 gallons of diesel going into the cash basins, we'd have an issue, so. I'm sure that would not be the county's intention.
Mr. Grimaldi, they still have to meet construction code, those standards apply to them, even though this is a, if you're not here for variance or relief, those standards still apply, they have to.
Yes, no, and that's why I just wanted our record that they are, they are meeting the regulations, just like the one that we have in kind of work, I'm sure, and it's the same, I don't know if it's the same brand, but it's the same system.
I think they are, and actually, in the past, there's, we're the backup, we replace the parts when the facilities are down.
I think that'll lead into your question.
Having been arrested of the, what is it, Title 31 or Section 31?
Section 31.
Section 31. I only got a couple of questions. And you just mentioned that they're stone enclosure, so that's just a, what, stone bedding above the slab, is it?
They're basically, they're, they're basically enclosed, encased in stone, and aesthetically, they've got like a pebble finish on the outside, that look aesthetically nice. I don't know if anybody's been to Ashbrook Golf Course, but we've got them at Ashbrook already.
So they're in, they're in place, you know, the other facilities?
Oh, definitely, I have, I have a smaller one up at Quar that the county operates, and they're at Ash, as I say, Ashbrook Golf Course, they've been up there for years.
So, just two more questions. So, you're saying, you're saying that it's fueling and that's where the county supplies the fueling, so they're going to drive up to it, but you've got bollards around all of them, so?
Bollards on the side, and there'll be some small dispensers that actually mount on the tank. The pumping units are on the tank and the dispensers are off to the side. There'll be two dispensers on, on each side of the tanks.
Okay.
So you'll have a diesel and a gas on each side of the tank.
Okay. And not to beat you up, but I just have to ask this question because I do. So there's a, there's a, there's a section in our ordinance that specifically talks about above ground storage tanks, and since we don't usually get those type of applications, I guess it never really comes up, so it, it would indicate that above ground storage tanks would have to have like a solid ball closure around it. Since you've put it in, in other towns and county, and I don't know what their laws are like or anything like that, have you come across that? Do they, is it required by law anywhere else?
I don't know if it's required by law anywhere else, honestly, but the bottom line, like I said, what they'll have is, is they're, they're going to sit in tandem, again, because the county, I, I don't know this for sure, but in case they want to use the properties to either side of the lot. So it'll sit in tandem and, and basically, you'll pull on either side of the tanks.
On either side of the bollards, right.
Yeah, and then fuel, and then you'll be able to swim right out of the lot. That's a 24/7 operation for us, where a lot of our smaller service yards are locked up due to their locations and so forth and so on, so, you know.
Okay.
It, it's just a move to update and upgrade everything. As I said, we, in the late 80s and early 90s, we had put those tanks in and updated them from what was once there before.
Right.
And, you know, this stuff is, is getting old and it's time to upgrade and bring them, you know, back today. That's the move behind it. And as I say, as, as I say, with the Kenworth location, there, there was a three and a six there, and the thought now is to put just a little bit more fuel capacity because it gives us more fuel capacity on this side of the county, where the only other place is Scotch Plains, the PW yard, the county yard on South Avenue.
Right.
Where we have 215s there in the ground.
Right.
There's no room in that lot.
Right. Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, I just want to make a statement to that, because Nick, you opened that door, and I just have to elaborate a little bit. Of course, we can only make recommendations at this point because this is a county application, but we did ask the question that we have in our, not in our ordinance, in our master plan, about a wall.
Right, it's in the ordinance.
I mean, in our ordinance, let's, just for clarification, our ordinance, master plan. And right now, we're hearing testimony that they're going to have a stoned front. I'm fine with it, I'm fine with it. I, I just want us all to remember that we're listening to this. If another applicant should come before us, we would hear the same testimony, and there's, and we should say, well, our ordinance says that it should be encapsulated or protected by a wall, I, we, we need to make sure that we have fair supply and that it doesn't come back to haunt us. Okay? So again, a recommend, because that door was open, they had to address it, so, you know.
Well, this applicant would understand it, it's different because we can, we can only make a suggestion, they don't have to take it. Whereas another applicant who comes before us, we can say, you're going to put a wall around it, right?
Are we required to do so by the ordinance?
Are we required to do so by the ordinance?
So would it be, so, being on that, so we don't set a precedent, and even though this is?
There's no precedent.
Okay, well, even though, so, I mean?
There isn't.
There's no precedent in some of them.
This is a separate, this application is different from all others?
Because it's under the 31.
Well, okay.
Okay, I was going to say, I mean, would you, would you want to get our response back from?
I can't believe it, Nick. I'm sorry, I can't.
No, I'm sorry, I, I was just saying, if there was any concerns, would it be advantageous to ask the county, not you, I'm just saying, the county or whoever, to come back and say, you know, we've heard your comments and blah, blah, and we're not going to provide, or whatever, or not going to?
Mr. Chair?
I don't know.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Can I clarify something that I think I heard that I think might be taken on in reference to your stone? He's not, correct me, you're not building a stone enclosure around it. The finish on the tanks itself is a?
Tanks are actually encased in concrete, yeah.
And is a stone, a stone finish, like a stone stucco on the tank itself. It's not a freestanding stone implement, so you're not looking at a metal tank, you're looking at a stone finished, or piece of material.
And I, and I get that perfectly, but it's not a structure.
And it's definitely not a wall, but he's building a wall.
But it's aesthetically, it's aesthetically pleasing.
Yes.
So.
If the majority of the board feels that they should apply with our ordinance, right, we can say, we recommend that the county build the wall as per, you know, and they can say, yes, or whatever.
So.
Respectfully, of course. I'm not, I, I, I'm bringing that up to the board because it's in our ordinance.
To the point.
And it's, and it's up for discussion, and by no means am I personally saying, not the wall. But I want to bring it up, that we do have an ordinance on it, and I want to know how to handle it, because obviously, like I said, we don't come across too many of these applications.
So, I would say this, as your chair, as the chair, if the ordinance says that a wall is going to go up, and if we cannot mix words, that although the stone is aesthetically pleasing, the stone encapsulation is really not the wall, a wall should be a wall. So as the chair, I would say that this board should really recognize that we should make a recommendation that a wall be put around these items as per our ordinance. If the county chooses to do it or not do it, at least this board was in compliance with our ordinance.
Yes, I think that's the way to handle it.
I think that's what I was, that's my driving trait.
You understand?
Yes.
That's, that's our recommendation for our code, county will do what it will, but, but the board, I think the board is leaning that way.
We can also argue, you can have a copy of the specs of the tank, and you'll find out that they're?
Then you could put a stone veneer on the wall. But, but I mean, this, this would be my recommendation, if we're going to look at it from the perspective that we have an ordinance in place, it's, it would be my recommendation to the county that our ordinance says that we would like to see a wall around that, and that's what we're going to, that's what I would recommend to it.
So does this require a resolution, even though?
It'll be, the ultimate action will be a vote indicating that we've reviewed the matter and we recommend.
X, Y, and Z.
X, Y, and Z.
So, is there a vote of approval, or?
It's a vote, not, not really. It's a vote taken, confirming that the matter's been reviewed, it's been discussed with the board, and the board offers the following recommendations. And right now, I'm hearing building, which are not mining, but it's the sense of the board, that they build a wall around the tanks for ordinance. Obviously, I think Harvard had meeting construction requirements, which is a no-brainer, whatever county, state, federal permits you need, those, those will be there, but right now, specifically, it's the recommendation that they build a wall. And that will be in a, in a resolution, they'll have it, and they'll do with, maybe they can work with Kevin, but they'll do with it what they will. So it's not a yes or a no vote, it's, we've reviewed it with the following recommendations, that's it.
So I'm a little confused on how to go further.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was, I was trying to get to, so we don't have to do anything, it's just, you're going to write a resolution, and that's it.
Well, do we all agree to vote on the, vote on what recommendations?
I mean, there's been one about the voice, we're going to have a vote on it, it could be a voice vote, you're not going to have to do it. If there's anything else that's reasonable, and I don't know if there is, Kevin, can you think of anything? And complying with whatever construction codes they need to comply with, that's a recommendation, more or less a requirement, and, and that's pretty much.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we acknowledge the review of the county's application, and the board makes a recommendation to install a wall in accordance with Borough Code.
And all construction codes where applicable.
Yeah, right.
I would second that.
Okay, motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Grimaldi. Roll call, please. By voice, or however.
Mr. Shoki?
Yes.
Mr. Serna?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Capari?
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Okay. That's it. That's it.
Good question. So now, let's start our next procedure, because I know the county has been waiting for permits, so we can get started. We did the removals, we have our inspections, everything was done, and we're waiting for the next procedure.
I think the next move is to... He'll receive the resolution.
He will get a resolution from us prior to the next meeting, which happens in all cases, and the board will adopt it. And if there's something that you can do that Bob's comfortable with prior to that, you know, knock yourself out. If not, you wait for the resolution and then go from there, you know, whatever.
So basically, I guess, I'm basically, we were just waiting to get started because that site's been out of commission for a while, and get some footings down, and put in tank pads and so forth.
Kevin, is there... They don't need our permission to start. Is there a way they can start?
They need permits.
Correct.
So whether they... This board has the ability to request the construction department to issue permits without a resolution, and it is up to the construction department whether or not they would do so. But you can recommend that.
Okay. I'm not 100% sure, but can... Bob is waving his hand. Can he speak to this matter, or does he have to wait to open to the public?
Well, he's an official.
Oh, no, he's asking a question about...
Well, I don't have a question. I was gonna make a recommendation and try to help the county.
Yeah, we're done with the hearing.
Yeah, so you can... He can. Yeah, sure, Bob.
Bob, punch him in.
Reach out to our building department and identify yourself and ask if the construction official, which is Jerry Edgar, if he can make... Reach out to you as soon as possible. Explain your situation, and you'd like to report the permit. He's the guy that's gonna say yes or no. Is Jerry here tomorrow afternoon?
No, he's here first thing in the early in the morning, but he's got to be before 8:00 o'clock.
Friday morning.
But if you're all funded, I'm sure he'll reach out. I'm sure the girl can reach out to the construction official, who's the best number to reach you, and you'd like to talk somewhere tomorrow, and I'm sure he'll reach out.
There should be some communication from the county following your receipt of our resolution.
Yes.
Indicating in a plan, in a letter, thank you so much, we're going... We decided not to take your recommendation. And that closes the circle for the board, so there should be some communications around the time of our resolution indicating what your intentions are. So that should come prior to the issuing of the zoning permit, et cetera. But you can by motion this evening make a request of the construction department to look at the request for permits, if you so wish, and that would be communicated with the construction department.
I make a motion unless Mr. O'Brien said...
So the motion was made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Mazzio?
Shoki.
Oh, Mr. Shoki, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shoki?
Yes.
Mr. Serna?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Capari?
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Colala?
Yes.
And Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Go to work. Okay. Good luck out there. Okay, next thing I want to hear is the comments for the good of the board. Anyone have any comments for the good of the board?
If I may just close out that last one, so we're authorizing this machine to upcommunicate with the construction department your motion.
Yes, exactly. Okay. There's something I just wanted to say, and maybe this is the portion that I can say this. The reason that I picked up on Mr. Pantina's idea about the wall is because although I know we can only make recommendations to the county, I also wanted to be on record that we recognize our own ordinance and that it's something that if another applicant came up here and maybe read this document and said, well, the county, and then we'd have to explain the whole county thing, but we did recommend that a wall be built by our ordinance, and that's the only reason. I was not trying to be hard-nosed. I think I may even want to see the stone tank rather than a wall, but it's part of our ordinance, and that's what we have to look for. Okay? Good catch. Yeah, good catch, Dan Donald.
I'll make a motion to open. Do we need to the public?
Did you...
I want to say something for the good of the town.
I want to open it to the public. I make a motion, do we need a second?
Second. Second, open by Mr. Shoki, Mr. David, and second by Mr. Shoki, you all favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
It's open to the public.
Yes, Mr.... I'd like to share some information. It's not a definite, but it seems to appear in the proper direction that it's a good shot happening. North Michigan Avenue, the Blackthorn, the owners have came in and inquired about maybe closing the Blackthorn and develop ground level commercial with some residential units above. They were asking about COA. Our ordinance does allow that zone up to 26 units to do that, and I just want to bring this up to speed. I've been contacted a few times by their engineer and their attorney, asking some good zoning questions and, you know, asking me to respond to them. So from my past experience, when an applicant is considering an application and taking these steps, they're pretty serious that they're gonna go forward. So that might be an application that's gonna be coming up from the board, it's gonna be a development to our community, you know? So I wanted to just share that with you. And then the other thing that I just want to bring to the chair and the board, in the future, if we get an application, residential, commercial, industrial, if the first floor, which is above-grade, is eight feet high, a wall, and then the next two floors are eight feet, even though that'll meet our height requirement, we still have an ordinance that the town only allows two and a half stories in residential. So all I'm asking in the future, any applications, look at that detail. In the past, over the years, we've had a couple of them that could contribute to be a three-story structure. We have a couple of them. So in the future, I'm just asking this board to look closer at that detail, because that would trigger another variance. And I believe that there is a case law stating that, and I'm familiar with different municipalities that a project has started, and they said, no, no, that's the basement, but it was above-grade, and the town took a stance and said, no, we gotta go back to the board. And that builder had to do that, had to be a commercial, it was a problem. So that's all. I'm just asking to look at that hard application.
Go ahead. This has come up... This comes up in a lot of towns, in terms of what's the first floor. And second, you have an ordinance that says, for instance, in a residential zone, 35 feet, no more than 35 feet or two and a half stories.
Correct.
Very frequently, it comes to three stories, but it's 33 feet. The miscellaneous law only speaks in terms of feet, not stories. And, you know, I always find it very confusing because you could have a three-story house that is well below the height limit, but because... And then what's a dormer? What's a third floor? And I don't know how to clean that up other than just speaking in terms of feet. I don't know, Kevin, if you have the same experience. A lot of towns have it.
What I've seen done, and in fact, what we proposed in this ordinance, was 35 feet, of course, sacrosanct, you can't touch that, anything over that variance situation. The two and a half feet of height that's required in the ordinance, if it's more than that, if it's three stories rather than the two and a half stories allowed, it's above variance. So they do require relief if they go above two and a half stories.
What... Clarify, two and a half stories, if the ground level is eight feet and then there's two and a half stories above that?
It's not the feet, it's clearance, it's above ground, and has to be done case by case.
Right. So above ground, first eight feet, above ground, and if that's living space, that floor is...
I would have to consult the ordinance.
And you have to see if it's... This comes up a lot with parking underground, under first floor parking or ground floor parking, and then is the next floor the first floor or the second floor? And if the ordinance talks about, well, if there's an elevator in the parking lot, then that counts as a floor. So it gets kind of nuts.
That's commercial.
Yeah. But it's... Yeah, the feet is sacrosanct, and we can deal with the...
You know what's that?
It's a big word.
Mr. Chair, I just had... To me, this seems like more of a discussion for work session.
Yes, yes. I would agree.
It's actually already been addressed in the ordinance, so I don't have to discuss it.
Sacrosanct trumps knock yourself down.
I was kind of on the... Thank you, Mr. Herbert. Meeting, seeing anyone else?
I'm gonna make a motion... Oh, didn't we close the public portion of the hearing?
Second.